For our pledge of allegiance in our prayer.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to Texas flag, a pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
And we have Pastor Moore here with us tonight. If you won't mind, if you'd please come up to the microphone and he is going to do our prayer tonight. And thank you for coming, Mr. Moore.
Pray with me. Father, as I stand before the city council members this evening and the residents of Loveland, Texas, I pray this prayer, Lord. The prayer that Solomon responded to you with when you asked him what it was you wanted him to get, wanted you to give him when he became king. He said this, if, if, give your servant an understanding heart to judge your people. To discern between good and evil, for who is able to judge this great people of yours. Lords, our city mayor and city council members. Are here, Lord, to help us, to lead us and to guide us. And they recognize that the people that you've given them to lead and to guide are wonderful people. And so, as they go about the business tonight, may you give them great discernment to lead such wonderful people and to guide them. Forgive us, Lord, when we fail you. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you Pastor Moore. Thank you so much. Now we're going to have a presentation by our police chief, Chief Erica O'Brien.
Hello, everyone. I'm going to turn and address the citizens here. So I'm honored today to stand up here before you guys to present two awards to two citizens within our community. On December 3rd, 2024, Loveland 911 received a call reporting a reckless driver involved in an active crash scene. The vehicle had struck parked cars as well as a citizen in the parking lot of the United supermarket and was continuing to pose a serious danger. Despite the danger, two brave citizens intervened, removing the keys from the vehicle and preventing the driver, who was later found to be intoxicated, from causing further harm. While we typically do not encourage citizens to put themselves in harm's way, Kenneth Hill and Caleb Baker acted appropriately in this urgent and dangerous situation. Their quick thinking and decisive action prevented further damage and potential injuries. For their extraordinary courage and commitment to the safety of our community, we are proud to present them with the chief's award. If you guys want to come on up with me. So on behalf of the Loveland Police Department and the entire city, I am honored to award you both with the chief's award. Thank you both for intervening when the time was needed to be intervened.
Can we get her up high?
Yeah, absolutely.
And I know Ms. Rios, who y'all helped save, and she's a fantastic lady. So thank you.
So I'll stand behind them as well.
Y'all speed up a little bit, keep it on our hands. I'll let the media get all their pictures. And then the family number two, all their pictures, and then I'll be mine. Last one. All these smiles. Thank you so much. All right. Thank you so much. Do you have any statements for our citizens? I don't have any statements. With that, since there's no statements for our citizens, we will move on to our first item of action. We will consider and take necessary action to approve the minutes of the December 16, 2024 regular meeting.
I moved that we approved the minutes of the December 16, 2024 regular meeting.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposed? With that, all motion carries. Okay, got it. Okay. Next item of business number two is to consider and take necessary action. A resolution number 2025-01 to order. An established procedure for the May 3rd, 2025 City of Loveland Uniform General Election.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I love geeking out at this, this time of year because as a city secretary, it's fun for me to have the first resolution of the year. 2025-01 is the election to order, I mean, the resolution to order our election. Our election will take place May 3rd. And up for election this cycle will be Council Districts B and Council, Council District D. The resolution 2025-01 simply outlines the things you need to know for the election, the early voting dates, the early voting locations. Who is handling our election? We always contract with Hawkley County for that. And this sets our date and officially calls our municipal election. So with that, I would ask you to recommend, or I would ask you to approve rather, resolution 2025-01 calling our election.
Mayor, I have moved that we approve resolution 2025-01 to order an established procedure for the May 3rd city election.
A second. A motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? With that, motion carries. And we're going to switch items three and item four. We have blocked the people here and in the best interest of your time, we'll move on to the public hearings for the properties first. So we will come back to item three, get where I need to be here. So items four and five, we will hold a public hearing regarding the substandard structures. Located at in the first property is 116 Walnut, Loveland, Texas, 79336, legal description, the Shannon Edition of Loveland Block 19, Block 2, the east half of 80. What time are you starting that public hearing? I'm going to start at 6:07.
Okay, Mayor, Council, good evening. I've got some subcenter structures to present to you. We'll begin with this one here. In my initial inspection of the following properties, the following buildings or dwellings did not meet the minimum standards as set forth by the International Property Maintenance Code and the International Building Code. And contained conditions and defects that render said structures uninhabitable and unfit for human occupancy. All owners and persons of interest were notified of the violations in accordance with Article 3.710, the City Code of Ordinances and requirement to obey said violations within 30 days. Of the date of said notices, and the notices were also placed on the substandard structures. And in my follow-up inspection of said properties, the substandard buildings or dwellings were not brought into compliance. All owners and persons of interest were notified in accordance with Article 3.710. With a minimum 30-day notice of a public hearing to be held before the Housing Standards Commission, and said notices were also placed on substandard structures. Notice of public hearing, notice of public hearing before the Housing Standards Commission were filed in the Hawkley County Real Property Records. And a public hearing was held before the Housing Standards Commission regarding the substandard structures. And it was the commission's recommendation to city council to order the owners to demolish and remove said substandard structures. And all owners and persons of interest were notified in accordance with Article 3.710 of the City Code of Ordinances with a minimum 30-day notice of a public hearing to be held before the city council, and said notices were placed on the subcenter structures. We'll go ahead and move forward with the first one. Subject property is 116 Walnut. The title report shows subject property to be in the names or the name of KNC Humble LLC. The Hawkley County taxes show to be in the name of KC Humble LLC. And Hawkley County appraisal district records show to be in the name of KC Humble LLC. So I don't know if y'all remember this property. This has come before y'all before. Let me get to my paperwork here. So originally back in March, let's see, sorry, February the 28th of 2023. This property went before the Housing Standards Commission, and they were given 120 days to abate the nuisance by repairing the, the structure. And then due to non-compliance, we had to revisit this. And on July 18th, it went before the Housing Standards one more time. And they were given six months to again abate the substandard structure by repairing the subcenter structure. And then for a final review on January the 23rd, the Housing Standards Commission went ahead and recommended to city council for this structure to be demolished since compliance had not been met. And then on March 4th is when we had the city council meeting. During that time, there was no action taken, if y'all remember. It was actually sent back to Housing Standards, at which time on May 14th, they were given an additional six months to bring the property into compliance by repairing it. And if they did not, then it would automatically revert to a recommendation to city council for demolition. And so if y'all remember. Some pictures of the inside. Now, they, they did, the owners did have some electrical work done. They basically roughed in, had the, the roughing on the electrical, so that was done. I believe a new meter box was put in, and I think a panel box, was it a panel box? Also a panel box on the inside, or I don't know if it's the inside or outside, but.
But some siding that had been replaced. That picture, that front picture that you showed was like in the December.
Yes.
October picture that we had shows siding missing underneath it.
You can tell the color has changed.
Yeah. And I know they had done the roofing at one time, and then we had the storm and it did cause some more damage to the roof at that point because of the hail, probably the wind as well. But this was the last time that we were inside the structure when they were doing the electrical work.
So you have not been in the property since?
No.
When was the last time you were inside?
Let's see, what is it? October. Yeah, back in October. That's what I have on that one. And I do believe the owners are here to speak on behalf of the property. So I don't know if you have any questions for me or.
What do you think, you know, I would take to bring this property up to?
Oh, um. Let me start with the outside. Now, we had spoken with the owners. Now, they, they had done the roof previously. Of course, the, the storm did some more damage to it. So it would actually have to be replaced again because of the hail damage. The soffit fascia, which we had let the owners know about that as well. Now, some of the stuff that needs to be done on the outside, they did paint it. I think some of the windows were replaced as well. Some of the windows are still not weather tight. You can still see into the house, so that still needs to be finished out. The roof and the decking or the fascia and the soffit is probably the main thing on, on the, on the top. The windows need to be sealed up properly. Kind of see there. It's kind of hard to see into the house, but you can actually see into the house from the sides. Finish off the siding. And then on the inside, like I said, they've already roughed in the electrical. So they, they still lack the final on the electricals. It has not been finalized out, finalized out, meaning that they still need to do all the, the receptacles. I mean, it's got to be completely done, like if it's ready to plug in and use, and then inspect it for a final inspection. You still have the plumbing that needs to be worked on, of course. I don't know if any of this has been cleaned up or any of the sheet rock has been done since October, when I was in the, in the house. Of course, that has to be repaired, the walls. The plumbing has to be brought up to code. Some of the flooring needs work. It needs to be replaced as well. Some of these areas that are burned structurally will have to be replaced as well.
Just to make sure I'm understanding, since I'm new, the first time it was brought to council was begin, two years ago, beginning of 23?
No, before, when it was brought to council, that was, let me get to my, sorry. Now, we started, I started this process back in January of 2023. So we are two years into this, but it, it didn't go to council till, look at my notes here. March the 4th of last year, which y'all didn't take action, and y'all basically sent it back to Housing Standards. At which time I represented to Housing Standards, and they gave them an additional six months to, to repair the structure and bring it up to code to where it's habitable. In that order, it also states that if they don't bring it up to code or bring it up, well, into compliance, that it automatically turns into recommendation back to city council for demolition.
That deadline was November 15th of 2024.
Yes, according to, look at that. Yes, November 15th would have given them the, the six months. Of course, we're a little bit past that, so they've had a few more months past that. That's what I have, so.
Thank you, Eli. Would y'all like to speak? Thank y'all for coming.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Mr. Fisher, we do have a few photos of just of what's not shown here. Basically, where we started and where we're at. All right. Those are just small progressions every, you have from where it started. I didn't include all the progression in between, but basically where we're at. The little bit of damage, there's about four pictures in there from the storm. We were set back unfortunately with the storm. They're not duplicates. They're just singles, so. And the last pictures are as of today.
I think we're starting today. Okay, it's just starting today. This starts today, so work that's been done. Any want to tell us a little bit about the work that y'all done?
Yes, so we have put in some money and a lot of time. It is just the two of us, a little bit of help from my dad. We did put a new roof on. There was a few things that we lacked. He mentioned the fascia and the soffit. We got just about all of that completed. The new roof, unfortunately, had some damage take place from the storm. We had some windows that we had just replaced knocked out as well, which are included in there. And some, some of the panels, the exterior panels were also ripped off, but we were able to save quite a bit of it and make it presentable once again. We've done our best in trying to keep everything mowed, the upkeep maintenance. We were a little discouraged when that storm happened. You can only imagine all the time that we had already put in and the money. We've had some big expenses in here. I know we haven't quite got to the plumbing, but we have been talking to some plumbers. We were just really hoping just to come off of the agenda already. We know it's going to take time, and I know it's not time that y'all are willing to provide anymore, but we are not big investors. We're not foreign investors. We're not out-of-state investors. We're literally Loveland, Texas investors trying to handle our first flip, and hopefully it's not a flop. That's kind of where we're at right now. I believe every time we've come to this council and the other subcommittee, we've presented progress. We've attended every meeting. I don't know how many y'all do have on the agenda in the past that present and then don't do anything or no progress or, or just kind of loose touch, but we do try to keep in touch with Eli. We're, we're trying to hold up our end of it, but we, we know, we realize it is, it is an expense, a big one, and it's something we still want to hopefully continue, but we realize that it takes money and it does take time.
What's your plan? What do you, what do you, what is the goal with this house?
Eventually, hopefully, place somebody in it. We know that the state, our state is growing. Lubbock is coming faster than we expected. Just based on the Texas Tribune, as of today, we're short in housing, over 300,000 housings, or 300,000 in shortage of housing. So we're just hoping to contribute and hopefully keep it going and, and having more, more of a place for somebody to stay. Keeping it on the appraisal row. I know we, we reiterated the fact that it was, it's set on the delinquency roll for 15 years. So we helped get it off of that roll and put it back on. You demoed it, that would be less taxes coming to you, to the ISD, which we know is struggling as well. So right now, they're getting a little bit out of it. I would hate for them to get any less.
Since it's January, what's your rehab plan for the property for the year moving forward?
For the year, I know that we need to get that roof back on or up to standard because it did, on one side of the roof, took a big beating. We know that that side of town did take the bigger part of that beating of the storm. We did apply and try to get some assistance. Unfortunately, we didn't get that assistance. We did do the surveys. So within all of y'all's data that y'all will probably be getting or have received funds for, that house is within that statistics as well. So we hope to hopefully complete that roof or redo it really because it was pretty much done. Timing wasn't on our side for that. Also the plumbing, we've been talking to people. We just came out of pocket a lot of money for the electrical. That's, that's a big expense for us, so.
Do you think in, in moving forward in the year, you would be able to get the windows fixed and kind of seal it up from the outside in?
We have replaced some windows twice already. Another expense, but yes, we plan on getting the trim. And yeah, to where you can't see. And, yeah, to where you can't see through it, pretty much.
You're looking at this as a housing rental?
Yes, yes, eventually.
The storm was a big setback for everybody.
Oh, yes. Once we got our houses, you know, in, you know, decent.
Goodness, yeah, we've been living in them years, they have to be the priority.
Oh, yeah, we got, we got ours, we we took care of ours first and then focused on this one cleanup and all shortly after.
That also took away from expenses that we were trying to put into the house and just everything is just against us right now, but we're still trying to push forward.
But progress is being made.
Yes, every time, every time we've presented, there's, we've made some kind of progress.
And Eli, you would second that?
Yes, they have. I have not.
We'll get them to you.
But they have, or every time we've taken it back, we we have seen the progress. I guess the only thing is that the Housing Standards just felt like it wasn't sufficient.
It's not enough progress.
Not enough in their opinion, so yeah, that's why they send it back to council, so.
You hate when there is progress going. There's so many of them, there's zero progress.
It's going in the right direction.
That's exactly right.
And there's some dedication, obviously, they wouldn't be here tonight if they weren't dedicated to getting the thing. I'm up for giving some more time.
Kim, I think you say all the right things. We we need the properties on the tax roll. We we need the, if you're if you're trying and we want the home there rather than demoing it. Does it, that costs the city money?
Absolutely.
In multiple ways, which you understand.
Our goal is never to take a house out of this town. We talk about it every time we have to vote to demo. I've heard all of us say, then what do we do with that land? I mean, it's going to be so hard to want to build something brand new right there, too. So we're on your side here. We just need you to continue.
And on the flip side, we have to be respectful to the Housing Standards Committee and their time and to to keep coming and looking at this, but progress is the key. If we're continuing to make progress, then.
Well, what would be a reasonable amount of time as far as you're concerned?
Um, I would hate to ask, just because I know that we've been under the.
If you say five years, you're out.
Well, it's hard to say, and last time you were told six months and it didn't happen, but the storm happened in the middle of that six months.
Right, right.
Really like. And we did, we had that for you, were told six months, the storm.
We have big goals, but we just can't seem to get there, but we're slowly getting there.
But we did do the roof, like we.
We we learned.
We are learning, like YouTube is our best friend right now, and me and Cam are both out there, like if I could, I should be putting the pictures of us on the roof, our selfies up there because we are literally doing this. Of course, with the help of.
Dad.
Yes, we are going in up there and he's showing us, hey, you're supposed to do it this way. And then he has to go and take care of what he has to do, but we are up there with the nail gun or, you know, doing what we have to do.
So out of respect for the housing people, what is a fair, what is a fair, I mean, is six months fair or is?
Well, there's a, there's a time factor. There's also a monetary consideration, there are two.
Weather.
I don't.
Any weather, I mean.
It's not my business. I'm not asking that, but that comes into play. Again, how much time? Do you think?
What do you think you could get done in six months?
Oh, probably the roof for sure, roof and these little cracks here that you see on the picture.
Roof that they shut and maybe.
Yeah, that's. If you could get the exterior six months, is that fair?
Absolutely.
Obviously, it's a goal.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a goal.
Yes, ma'am.
And if you could stay in constant communication with Eli and maybe send pictures as you do complete things, I'm speaking for him. I don't know if that would be helpful to him. And and just just show that progress or invite him to drive by and look at something. Okay, we're, like they're all saying, we're on your side. We want this to be a win, too.
Perfect.
You got written goals for that as far as we want to accomplish this, 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 and this. Do you have that written that you might, you and Eli could?
We do.
And maybe set those goals in a time.
We do.
By this date, we're going to have the outside sealed up, and by this date, we're going to have the plumbing done. You know, so that there's some obtainable goals. We don't, we're not going to say it has to be, it's perfect in two months. But it needs to be a lot better.
Minute ready in two months.
Right, right.
We we did, she did, provide a detailed outline at one point. But I think because of the storm, that that just kind of threw a wrench in the.
Yeah, absolutely.
Messed everything up, so they kind of messed up their timeline, which I understand.
And I do think grace has to be given for that.
I think that was so, maybe we revisit your goal list and start over. I mean, that's what you're essentially doing, right? The storm set you back completely. You're really not starting over from where you were, I can say that.
Right.
Though I hadn't seen them, I wasn't on council when it was first, when y'all first took it. Y'all have made progress. But right, I mean, that's fair. Sit down and make, keep your goals, you have great.
Just revise that plan.
Yeah, revise it.
Okay.
On our legality, where we at on it?
We're going to do six months, we need to say.
You can give an extension, yes. The the more detailed goals that they're able to provide for, you know, the timeline and the extension that you give better.
And even if it ends up being six months from today and you bring it, we just, again, like he said, we just need to see the progress, like you may not have a tenant in there in six months. You, I mean, that may not, you know, that's not realistic, but just see those, but you're improving the neighborhood.
Oh, yes.
I'm just saying that I don't mean that in six months, you're going to pour all this money and you're going to come in and us be like, okay, six months is up, it's going to go down to the ground now, but.
Okay.
Picture, revise it, we're opening. With a revised detailed plan.
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll work on that revised plan and then.
Presented.
Pandora's box.
I would, I would move six month extension.
Can we do our motion now or we?
Let me, let me find out from.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so, so we will.
Are we opening a Pandora's box?
Yes and no. I mean, I'm not one that lacks the word precedent, but you've got two property owners that are trying their best to move forward, trying to do some stuff. So, and you give them a chance, and the storm threw a curveball in there, and they're still here. I mean, they could have thrown up their hands and just said.
They could have, they could have decided not to come tonight.
I mean, when you get into get out of public hearing and go into the actual action item. Very similar to what you did last time, you could table this one item, ask them to get with Eli to get some more definitive goals and then come back at the twentieth meeting in six months, this is what we need done or accomplished or whatever, because it's also going to be hard to do anything during this winter weather. There's stuff soon. I think giving them some time to work with again and try to set a timetable for January through June, and just if that's y'all's choice, is is table this and and make that decision at that time.
So table it until the twentieth.
Okay, and we'll. Have the action item after all. Yes, number one, thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Stay in contact with Eli.
Yes, ma'am.
And thank you for trying to rehab a property in our town.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, thank you.
Next subject property is thirteen oh eight Ninth Street. Title report shows subject property in the names of half interest to a Dennis Neil Prindle and half interest to the estate of Shirley Jean Prindle and any unknown heirs. Oakley County taxes shows to be in the names of Dennis and Tammy Prindle. Oakley County Appraisal District Record showed to be in the names of Dennis and Tammy Prindle. A few pictures for us to see on the outside. You on the inside. And Mr. Prindle, Dennis has stayed in contact with me. He did mention that he was interested, I don't know if he still is, in have it the structure demolished. But we'll give him the time to talk on behalf of it, so.
Okay. Thank you, Eli. Mr. Prindle, would you like to speak?
Hi. I'm Dennis and Tammy's daughter-in-law. It's just easier for me to talk. So they have, at the last meeting, Dennis did make sure that he knew that y'all knew that they planned on getting it taken care of. Due to health issues and some things that have come up, what they did decide to do is sell the house. They have sold it. They actually closed on the seventeenth.
Seventeenth of January?
Uh, yes.
Do you know who they sold to?
I do. I actually have the contract in my email, if you guys want to look at that.
Could you send that to Eli?
Yeah, I can. Yeah, I'll get that to him. But they closed on the seventeenth. They were supposed to close earlier, and then the holidays kind of pushed it back. Now, the new people, I don't know what their plan is, whether demolish it, try to fix it up or whatever. But that way, it's taken care of and.
Okay, are they closing through the, through the title office here in town? Okay, and how how will that work? I mean, the new owner inherits the same same regulations, right? I mean, nothing changes, no interruption.
Yeah, they were made aware from the very beginning what was going on, what needed to be done, that kind of thing, so they're going to take over dealing with all of that.
You said they closed the, this month or they did?
This month. Yeah, they were supposed to in December, and then holidays and stuff made it a little tough, and they moved it around.
Okay, but the new owner is not here today.
No, they're not. And we actually reached out to them this evening so that they can give me the contracts, I can send it over.
Okay.
So really, this one has to be tabled until after we close?
No.
No.
Oh, okay. New owner, I mean.
He just attaches to that property and you'll have to.
It's posted on there, it's.
Yeah, they were made aware of that.
It's one of the reasons why we have to post the notice on the real property record, so that way when they do the title work, that pops up and notifies them that something's being done with property.
Well, that's an interesting case. Thank you for coming and telling us. Yes, appreciate y'all coming in. Thanks. Yeah, wish the new owner was was here and they could tell us their plan.
And I I will let them know about the meeting on the twentieth, so maybe they can attend that one. That's going to be right after they close anyways, so they can.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I I kind of feel like this one is beyond repair, that.
Yeah, the the inside of it, talking with Mr. Prindle, they they basically gutted out. I think the the wiring, and I'm not sure about the plumbing as well or everything, so, I mean, everything needs to be brought up to code, structurally, plumbing, electrical, everything. You know, the outside's not in good condition as well. Or from the pictures, the roofing, everything needs to be redone.
Can you, yeah, can say, can you run back through those pics again?
Yeah. That flooring right there, you can see where it's all buckled up right there. There's a lot of water damage on the inside of the structure, too, so.
So I mean, essentially, they're closing in eleven days, but that's.
Yeah. No, pure beam, pure beam, yes, sir.
So, okay, well, I. That one, yeah, to go down. Yes.
Okay.
Next property would be eight oh two Row Road Avenue.
Yes. Sorry, got to decipher through my notes here. Okay, eight oh two Row Road Avenue, title report showing under the name of Hughlin Bradley Jean Anne Horn and Sharon Gail Bernstein. Oakley County taxes to be in the name of Hughlin Bradley and Rhonda Bradley. Oakley County Appraisal District Record showed to be in the names of Hughlin Bradley and Rhonda Bradley. So I don't know if y'all found this one, if y'all had a chance to go look at it, but Railroad Avenue is not paved. So you'd almost mistake it for an alley. It's basically, it's almost right at on the end of, what is that? Is that H and Row Road? It's kind of tucked away. It's, it's where they used to call the donkey pin area. It's it's tucked in behind there. Greg's backhoe actually is close right there, Clean Co's right there. So you almost can't see it really, to be honest with you.
Totally.
Yeah, it's a lot of trees, a lot of junk weeds. My understanding was that used to be some type of a scale. A scale, yeah, yeah, back in the day. I'm not sure who was telling me. I can't even remember what they used to weigh there, but it it was some type of business, like the front there's, it'll show the picture here in a minute, that red door is an entrance to like a little office. That's the back view.
Have you been in talk contact with Mr. and Mrs. Bradley at all?
No, no, all the mail just comes back unclaimed. That's the inside right there, the little office. And then that's the back area of the the structure. So that's basically what I have on that one.
And in your opinion, the property is non-down.
Yeah, correct, yeah. We we believe it needs to be demolished. I know that's a Housing Standards recommendation, and the city inspector and myself believe that it needs to be demolished. It's been vacant for a long time, unsecure. As you can see from the picture, so it just continues to deteriorate, so.
If that property is demolished, that property could be abused to either of these people.
Could be. They may be better interested if that was out of the way, and, you know, Greg's backhoe, I don't know, Clean Co, I I don't know. Somebody might be interested in it.
Any more questions on that one? Okay. Nine oh four Avenue C.
Eight oh four Avenue C, title report shows to be in the name of Real Estate Union LLC. Oakley County taxes show to be in the name of of Casimir Investments. Well, this was still last year, so at the end of last year, they had updated the taxes under Real Estate Union LLC quite yet. Probably is now, since we're in the new year. Oakley County Appraisal District Record showed to be in the name of Real Estate Union LLC. So this is another property where let's see here, on November the twenty eighth, twenty twenty-three, they were given three months to repair the structure, okay? And compliance had not been met, so we revisited this at the Housing Standards. They were given an additional sixty days, and by the way, the owner did call in through, oh, we zoomed, I'm sorry, he zoomed in. So he he was in the meetings requesting this time. And then in May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, he was given an additional sixty days to bring the property into compliance to repair it. And then when that was not done, when we revisited at the Housing Standards on November fifth, they went ahead and recommended to city council for for demolishment, excuse me, and.
Any communication with the owner from?
No, not since the last time, when he attended the the first two meetings. You know, he was requesting the time to to fix the property. He had actually purchased, I think, like five properties. Because it was under, it was under Casimir Investments initially, and there was like five properties. Couple of them did get fixed and sold, I think, three of them, maybe two, three. It got passed to Real Estate Union, which I think their family members, they have the same last name. Two oh seven Avenue L, that's one that came before y'all. That that's been demolished already, and this is another one that he owned, that he was given time to fix, which he did not. But from this last time for the notices on on this meeting that we're having here today, I I had no response from him other than unplanned.
Off the tax, off that tax.
Yes. Yes, yeah, from the TCG properties, yes, sir. And so, and we also had to get it boarded up at one time because it it was unsecure.
So we did all that work.
Yes. So that's what it looks like. They basically gutted it. I mean, there is some old wiring in there. There's some foundational issues there around the the edge of it. And this is what it looks like right now, so. Uh, and this is what it looks like right now, so. Oh, I think that's the same picture from, I think it's a level picture, maybe, yeah, so. Either way, that's, that's what it looked like on the inside, so.
Non-repair.
Yeah.
Any more questions on that property? Next property is thirteen oh nine Second Street.
Okay. Thirteen oh nine Second Street, title report shows to be in the names of Doralia Gonzalez and the estate of Maria Cisneros and any known heirs. Oakley County taxes show to be in the names of Estorpio and Maria Cisneros. And Oakley County appraisal district record show to be in the names of Estorpio and Maria Cisneros. It was kind of hard to see. I think last year, there, there was some type of a carport there. It's kind of hard to see, but it was burned. Um, there were some vagrants there, I think, trying to, they had something lit up, trying to stay warm and they ended up burning the side of the house. And there is a structure in the back, which we'll, we'll see here in just a moment. That's the back view of it. That's the little unit in the back. And this one, we've had it boarded up once already, but as you can tell, they've gotten into it again, so.
Any contact from the owners on this property?
No, just the mail coming back unclaimed.
And nothing but, some good things happening there.
No, yeah, there's all kinds of activity in those, especially this house. Uh, I know one time I had to meet the, the police officers out there to find somebody, but either way, that's another story.
Yeah, that one looks.
So. That's what those two look like.
And that, those are pictures of thirteen oh nine and thirteen eleven?
No, thirteen eleven is coming up, yeah. So thirteen oh nine and then it's got the unit in the back. It's still thirteen oh nine, yes, ma'am.
Any more questions on thirteen oh nine?
Oh, these are next.
Yeah, they're. If not, we'll move to thirteen eleven.
Thirteen eleven's right next to this one. It's right on the corner. Get to it here. Uh, title report showing to be in the names of Gilbert and Marie Bernadette Wajardo. Oakley County taxes show to be in the name of Joe Valderas Junior. Oakley County appraisal district record showed to be in the name of Joe Valderas Junior.
And just total coincidence that they're right next to it, right? I mean, no relation in ownership.
Uh, I, I honestly don't know, but. And I know the city had boarded this up. This was, uh, previous to me. I think, uh, Dino Walmac, the previous code enforcement officer, had this boarded up as well. New vagrants getting in. That's the back view. Uh, a different view. Of course, it was still, um, unsecure there. It's kind of hard to see it. There should be a closer picture, but when that storm hit, it actually caused. So. Like the huge, yeah, garage there that wind actually pushed that wall in. And then just a few pictures on the inside. That's it.
Any communication with the owners on this?
No. The, the Joe Valderas, well, I guess it takes me back to, uh, when I had to meet the officers out there. Um, back then, um, he was arrested. I don't know what for. I just, you know, I wasn't involved with, you know, why or anything like that, but back then he was arrested, so I don't, I had no communication with them, so I don't know if he was still in jail, prison. I have no idea, so.
Got it.
But but other than that, that is it.
Any more questions on thirteen eleven Second Street? That will go to item number, we need to close the public hearing. Set direct on Andrea at six forty-eight. And we'll move to item number five, consider and take necessary action and issue any necessary order to abate, repair, structure, or demolish regarding substandard structures located at, the first would be one sixteen Walnut.
Mayor, I move that we table one sixteen Walnut. So our meeting for January twentieth, so that the owners can get with Eli and make some new goals present to us.
So.
Move a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? With that, motion carries. Good luck, ladies.
Rooting for y'all.
Yes. And we will move on to the next property to consider and take necessary action and issue any necessary order to abate, repair, structure, or demolish regarding substandard structure located at, um, thirteen oh eight Ninth Street, which is the Prindle property, which is the property that got sold, and, um, we'll close January seventeenth.
Mayor, I, I move that we, uh, issue abatement or demolition orders for thirteen oh nine, thirteen oh eight Ninth Street and Level N legal description, uh, O-Town Level N Block one forty-five Lot four. And that's a thirty-day demo.
De- defaults thirty, maximum's ninety.
I, I think thirty days.
I don't have a problem with that. They knew what they're, what they're buying. We have a second.
Surely they're planning to.
Say it.
Come in. We have a second, Phil. Move a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed with that motion carries? Next property will be eight oh two Railroad Avenue.
Mayor, move we, um, demolish property. What is the time?
Uh, defaults thirty days.
Thirty days? Thirty days. That we, we issue an order for that, that we give them that thirty days to demolish it. If they don't, we take it.
Keep going.
They'll have thirty days. We have a second, move a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
That no opposed motion carries. Next property will be eight oh four Avenue C.
I move that we move forward with a demolition order for eight oh four Avenue C in Level N Texas for thirty days.
Sure.
Move a second, motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Then opposed with that, the motion carries. Next property to be considered is thirteen oh nine Second Street, Level N Texas, seven nine three three six. Was the two, one of the two that, um, sat beside each other, the neighboring properties.
Mayor, I move that we issue abatement orders for demolition for thirteen oh nine Second Street, Level N Texas, legal description, O-Town Level N Block sixty-seven Lots five, uh, the east half and Lot six, the east half.
Second.
Thirty-day notice.
Thirty-eight, thirty days notice. We have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Then opposed with that, the motion carries. Next property under consideration is thirteen eleven Second Street, Level N Texas, seven nine three three six. Second, neighboring property.
Mayor, I, I move that we issue the same abatement orders for thirteen eleven Second Street, Level N Texas, uh, legal description, O-Town Level N Block sixty-seven, uh, west half of Lot five, the west half of Lot, of Lot six, uh, giving them thirty days.
Okay. Move a second, motion in a second, all in favor? With that, motion carries. Now we will go back to item number three, consider and take necessary action on the city of Level N organizational changes.
And I thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Eli, for your tremendous work.
Mayor and members of council, thank you for, uh, allowing us to take care of that other item prior to this. I wanted to bring this item, uh, to you is this is one of those items you normally try to take care of during budget so that you can, um, plan accordingly and, and take care of some, some items that you weren't. And I know we, we discussed some of this, but it just didn't come together, uh, as quickly as we want. And we also discovered the more that we worked on, uh, various items that we, it's kind of like pulling a, a string on a sweater. Things just started kind of unraveling. But let me kind of predicate with a few things that really started drawing my attention to, um, how we need to start addressing the, the, some of the compensation and organizational changes that we have. Um, in twenty twenty-five, where we're at right now, these are the projects that we have scheduled, uh, to begin this year. We have a wastewater treatment plant, about nineteen million dollars. We have a water meter changeout project of five point eight million. We have an airport lighting project of two point two million, an airport layout plant of four hundred thousand. Communications tower, that's at the end of this agenda, but I'm sure we're gonna move forward to three hundred K. We've also, uh, with our ARPA funds, we put in dollars for animal services facility and study, a housing study, swimming pool study, comprehensive, uh, zoning review, uh, broadband enhancement. All of that comes out to about three hundred K. Um, an item we haven't budgeted yet, but it has come up, is our SCADA system, is about eight hundred K to, to repair that program. Our seal coat program, about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This comes out to close to twenty-nine million dollars worth of projects that we are looking at just to begin this year, and we haven't even jumped within the infrastructure plan that we know that we'll be looking at addressing as we move later into this year. In order for these plans to be successful, we have to have the employees in place to help us, uh, make sure that that occurs. If you'll recall during the audit, the auditor mentioned that we finished about a million dollars, uh, more in the black than anticipated. Part of that, I don't want people to think that, you know, we just had excess funds laying around. The reason, the primary reason for that is because we had a lot of vacancies. We had a lot of areas where we did not fill positions. So for the past six months or so, especially in the police department, we began looking at PD and why do we have so many openings? What is going on in there? And one of the things that we found is that the pay plan that they were operating under that time was, was limited. Um, it didn't have the same range as the rest of the employees. So, we started looking at that of how could we readdress that? And how could we make ourselves more attractive for not only retaining our employees, but how we also could be recruiting employees? And how can we make it attractive for lateral transfers for employees that may be working in other agencies that want to come, uh, work for Level N? So through the valiant efforts of, uh, Captain Lopez, Captain McDonald, uh, Chief O'Brien and Margot, um, all began looking at it and we started expanding our pay scale to give us greater flexibility, greater ability to, um, show our employees how we're gonna take care of them. Some models, um, showed about after five years, the, the current model, that after five years, they were kind of maxed out. They couldn't go any higher in any other direction. That's not good. Uh, we want employees who can grow. We want to be able to take care of our employees. So we looked at restructuring this, uh, so that we could e- expand where we're at, uh, with our police department and move forward. You know, the hard part to this is gonna be about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars that is going to impact our budget. Uh, this year we'll be able to absorb the majority of that cost just due to some vacancies that we currently have now. Uh, Captain Chief, we're at, how many, six? Seven still? So, we're, we're moving forward on this. Uh, they've been waiting for me to give the final okay on this and I didn't want to do that until we got before, uh, city council, so y'all would be in the loop in this. Um, this will have, anytime you're affecting employee salaries, wages, anything like this has a permanent impact upon the budget. Uh, it's not something that we just do and here's a hundred and thirty and we move on. Every year we will see this, if not a little bit more, because we do have cost of living. You compound this with, a few years ago with ARPA funds, we hired additional public safety officers and police and fire use and, um, kind of temporary funds for permanent positions. So that has an impact upon the budget and, um, I know sometimes, you know, folks, and, and we're very cognizant of this when we present the budget and council's very cognizant of it whenever they're entertaining budget and taxes of keeping our taxes as low as we can, but we've also got to take care of our employees. So, one of the items in tonight is, is to begin that restructuring of the police department's pay scale and creating that flexibility so we can continue to move forward. Another item that came up, um, recently is the restructuring of our, um, Public Works Department. Um, Joe Cavasso is our ACM, um, is listed also as our Director of Public Works and he's got numerous licenses. He's very uh, wise and, and very, um, valuable in, in our water and wastewater fields. Um, but I'm only needing Joe's expertise. I'm still gonna need him, you know, looking after our public works, but I'm gonna be appealing him more to be managing these capital projects, this, you know, uh, millions of dollars worth of projects, you know? Uh, Joe, um, got baptized by fire by learning our budget. And I'm a firm believer, there's always a reason for everything, and I think that was a good reason to help him financially manage as well as, as project-wise of keeping these projects moving forward so we can be financially responsible. But in doing that, we've also, you know, uh, Kevin serves as our Assistant Director and he does a, a great job. But we've got to look within this department of how, uh, we're training our employees um, to take care of the day-to-day things. Kevin's not gonna be with us forever. I wish he was, but I can almost assure you he's probably gonna retire sometime within the next three years, maybe five years. Um, and it takes at least three years to get any employee up to speed. We also, within water, wastewater, sanitation, streets, these employees in these departments have to have, uh, certain types of licenses required by state to maintain our system. And it takes a while to get these licenses. So we're gonna be looking at ways to, um, help them with education, with training, to, so they can be successful in, in obtaining the, the necessary license uh, that are required to take care of our community and take care of our organization, but also cross-trained. That's kind of a third element that I found that we have a lot of employees that they may be the only one that does this job. We've got the absolute best city secretary in the state, but she's the only one that does everything that's there. And I don't like to keep referencing back to COVID, but if COVID taught us anything in this world is we've got to make sure we have employees available to step up and to be able to do other people's jobs or to fill in in positions. And so city secretary is one of those, that we've got one person in there. We've got a lot of stuff within finance that were very limited. I know we can't afford everything. We can't afford a whole bunch of employees, but we have to make sure that we have the employees in place, that we're cross-training, that we can get things done, but at the same time, if somebody is out due to illness, due to family issues, or if they just decide not to come back to work one day, that we can continue to provide the exceptional services, um, that our community deserves. So, we are looking at restructuring public works to, we're gonna be creating two superintendent positions that are over water and wastewater and then street sanitation and shop. Be a little bit of, uh, some salary adjustments in there, but also creating, um, an education, training system to where we can help our uh, employees be, um, successful in what they do. We're also, um, again, we've talked about training, you know, we're gonna try on Fridays as much as we can is to create Fridays as our, our, our training day, whether it's CPR and first aid, or whether it's, uh, sitting down and studying and, and getting mentored on class D water license or class uh, D wastewater license, just whatever is needed so that we can make sure that our employees have, uh, the best opportunities. And those are just two of the bigger departments that I mentioned are, are public safety. We've got others, parks and cemeteries, um, Main Street, just all of them out there. We've got to make sure they've got the training. We've got to make sure we have people in place to help us move, uh, the organization forward. We're gonna try our best in working with our, our city attorney's office even to provide training that just helps them understand what we're expected to do and legally what we're required to do as an organization. We've got a new employee handbook that'll hopefully be coming to y'all on the twentieth. that outlines the expectations of our employees and and the responsibilities that we have as their employer to take care of them and make sure that they have um everything that they need to be successful. We've got a lot coming. We've got a lot on our plate and we've got even more coming, but I believe we have the absolute best employees out there. And we've asked them to really stretch themselves and do more than their job has asked them to do and we need to be pulling some of that off and placing it in other areas if we absolutely can. And we're going to be trying that uh over the next few months of giving some employees the ability to say, hey, I really want to take on this. I want to uh expand myself and make sure that uh um how valuable I am to this organization. I've had one employee um already asked me if uh if a certain employee leaves, would we consider them to move up into that position? That's what we want. We don't want employees to wait till the vacancy is there. We want them to be saying, hey, so and so could be leaving in work toward a few months, and I'm going to be ready before they leave. That's the kind of employees and we've got a lot of them. We just have a responsibility as management to provide those opportunities to them. So I wanted to bring to you that there's going to be some some financial adjustments. Some of them were budgeted and we're looking to where we make adjustments in this. But I feel that this is in the best interest of our organization and the best interest of our community that we empower our employees and then give them the tools to succeed. But also reminding you that this will have an impact to budget in a in a lot of different arenas.
Thank you for bringing this to us. Thank you and Joe for bringing this to us. This is management at at its best. We're trying to manage our people and give them the opportunity and the ability to grow. Leveling is, we've said we wanted to level up. This is the opportunity to level up with our people. We need to take care of our people because they are the people that take care of us. Public safety takes care of us, but also public works takes care of us. I need the water and the sewer systems to be safe and I need them to work as much as I need my house to be safe. I need those things. So we've got to take care of those people and give them room for growth. And if it's, we're going to run the city slightly like a business. Businesses are ready to be able to do other jobs and they're cross trained and uh they're ready in the in a moment's notice for a for a vacancy. And that's what we're trying to do is just level up and make sure our people are ready to do other jobs, but also give them opportunity for growth. And I love the training on Fridays to help them obtain these licenses, not just saying, go get that license, Brian, but here's some mentoring to sit down and train you and help you obtain that license.
Would that also be a time that employees that have never looked at the sewer plan and its inner workings that maybe some of those those other employees from other departments during those Fridays to go see how the other departments work? Because I think if if they understand the inner workings of every department, they have to understand what's going on budget wise and manpower wise and everything.
Absolutely.
Love that Friday idea of doing trainings and
We're going to be doing that and even understanding um, you know, with police fire. Everybody needs to understand what everybody is doing. And we're going to even open it up to our smaller communities around us because they don't necessarily have the resources. And if we're going to provide some training here, then we're going to open it up to our neighbors so that they can come and and um learn from us and we learn from them because you don't know how many times some of these smaller communities reach out and say, hey, Lemon, we need some help for today. And if we already have that relationship, it's easier to come in and and help out where we can.
We had that storm. We had surrounding communities come in and I pitched in and helped us if we were in desperate need.
Exactly right.
You think uh, Mr. Fisher, when you're talking about building in this redundancy or this this cross training, you have you have personnel already on board to do that? You're not talking about hiring new people. I understand that, but we have people that can step into this. I mean, who would who would follow the city secretary? Who would back up the city secretary?
We we may have to look at adding a couple of positions in some areas just to create that redundancy within there or to ensure that we have it. But if um if we add any, that'll definitely be something that we try to postpone into next year's budget if we if we can. But there are some that uh we've got an employee out now that is out on uh FMLA. And uh when they get well, we'll be sliding them in, but the position that they were in, we're not taking it away from them, but we're going to be placing someone in there. But we're creating uh another spot for them that will have an impact on the budget as as well. So we're going to be looking at every area that we can. We're looking at duties and responsibilities and see where we can maybe take some off this person's plate and move it over to this person's plate. And and just kind of look at different uh responsibilities and tasks and see where we could move those around and then start making sure people understand what everybody is doing.
And that's just what gets to be noted. I'm not ignoring the hundred and thirty thousand dollars this is going to cost. I'm almost embracing it. I'm tired of those police positions being vacant. We have to change something. Well, the way we're doing it's not working. We have to change, change or just fall apart. But we're on the edge of growth. So we're going to change and get them filled and fill them with great officers and move forward. So I embrace it in the fact that we had to look at something different and do something different. The only way you get a different outcome. I'm tired of our officers having to work so much to fill these these shifts because we don't have enough officers. We're running through ourselves. And we want great people. And so we're again just trying to level up and it is going to cost. You're exactly right. Hundred and thirty thousand dollars. But we're going to fill those spots that we haven't had filled in years. And leveling is going to be safer because
And our telecommunications team is also another one and um those folks over there are going beyond every every expectation. I mean, we we're shorthanded over there and they're doing different things to to make it work. We're recruiting as hard as we can. It's a tough job. And it is a very demanding job, but uh we've got excellent folks and we're trying to find even better folks to come in and help them. All right. It it it's tough.
So this is an action item. Um, of course, to consider and take necessary action on the city of Levelland organizational changes, not to say that that's the end of this.
How do you want this, Mayor? You want a recommend, you want a recommendation that we
I'm going to approve the city of Levelland organizational
City manager?
Yeah, but I think Jamie just nailed the button. I move to approve the city of Levelland organizational changes. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? With that motion carries. Thank you for that, James and Joe and all your work in that. I'm excited to see that come. Next item will be consider and take necessary action on ordinance ten eighty seven on the first reading granting to Atmos Energy the right privilege and franchise to conduct within the city of Levelland Texans a gas.
Mayor and members of council, the city's franchise agreement with Atmos expired last April. And uh we really didn't get busy working on it until Atmos told us this in the fall. Um, through the work of Slater and his team, we have a um a franchise agreement for y'all's consideration. However, I'm not asking for any action tonight. Uh, because I just got the chance this weekend to get through it and understand all the pieces. I will be emailing it tomorrow to Atmos and advising them. It'll be on our twentieth agenda uh and it will require uh three readings per our charter. So we're also going to try to add at least fifteen more pages so our city secretary will get to to read all of this uh for her enjoyment somewhere along the way. So no action on this item. If y'all see anything in there that needs clarified or you don't understand, ask me now. Or you just shoot me an email and say, hey, what exactly uh does this mean uh in regards to this? The franchise agreement, as you know, it it provides uh compensation for uh being in our right of ways. And uh hopefully we can have better communication with Atmos on some projects that they do within town because sometimes we don't even know they're here doing work. So we're hoping that we'll we'll get better communication with them as well.
Okay.
We need a table or are we just
I'd move the table this.
Do the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Now oppose what that motion carries. We'll move to item number seven, consider and take necessary action and payment request from MRSGO in the amount of two hundred and eighty three thousand forty dollars and fifty eight cents for the water meter project pursuant to the contract approved between the city and MRSGO in October twenty twenty four.
Mayor and members of council, as y'all recall, that we've approved this project move forward and we will be considering uh certificates of obligation in February at the eighteen, February eighteenth, which is a Tuesday meeting. And what this will allow us to do is to pay this invoice, but once O C of Oz or issue, we'll be able to reimburse ourselves uh back for this item. Once the council approves certificates of obligations, they take anywhere from thirty sixty outside is ninety days for the funds to come in. But once they get here, we will reimburse ourselves. So we would ask for approval of this item.
I move to approve payment application number one for MRSGO in the amount of two hundred and eighty three thousand forty dollars and fifty eight. Motion in second, all in favor? Neopost? That that motion carries. Item number eight is to consider and take necessary action to authorize the mayor and our city manager to sign the necessary documents for the three hundred foot guide tower and related amenities, studies, filing fees, impairments, support facilities, security fencing, antenna, cable, related equipment and removing
Mayor and members of council, this item before you uh is to replace the um guide tower, our communication tower that's located out in City Park. This item was damaged and I know Cole's been working real hard to try to get various estimates to repair. Um, and we found multiple, well, the company just really didn't want to climb it and I don't think I blame them. So we stepped back and looked at replacing it and replacing is actually the the best option uh of this whole thing. And also in replacing, get to add another fifty feet to it, which will help with communication uh challenges that we've had as well. The cost breakdown is kind of complicated and weird because um we got multiple different entities that are contributing uh to this item. Um, there is zero insurance on the old tower because it was never listed under our uh property insurance for items. The the new one will be so that we don't find ourselves in this situation again. The actual cost to this item, uh we we well, we allocated about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in ARPA funding at the December sixteenth deal and the breakdown uh is two hundred and ninety seven thousand dollars in a new tower structure. Um, minus seventy nine thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars at FEMA um is going to contribute. And then there's another ninety nine thousand mitigation match. And then there's a positive fifty thousand in environmental impact study and all the pieces that go with that. So I've got Cole here that can kind of make sense of all of this if it's completely confusing.
Been talking about this tower for a long time. And I'm excited to think that we're going to be able to get it and then also going to help the communication problems we've had moving east.
Correct, yes ma'am. Apparently the police department is sitting at a hundred and twenty foot. Uh, they're on the tower that's next to the law enforcement center. Um, and so this one would move them from a hundred and twenty foot to three hundred and nineteen feet, uh which should alleviate all their communication issues in the Kaufman area. Um, but as far as the breakdown goes, the original quote was two hundred and ninety seven thousand for or the bid, uh it's a tips bid uh through our local communications uh company, South Plains Communication. Um, two hundred and ninety seven thousand for a new tower and tear down the old one. Um, and then that adds in, well, since it was damaged in the storm and since it was not covered on insurance, it falls under a FEMA project. Um, because the cost of the tower damages do not exceed half of the cost of the new one. They will only pay for damages. Um, and that's an eighty twenty match. So on the breakdown, I don't know if you got to see that completely. Um, so that's the seventy nine nine twenty. Um, on top of that, because we're building a bigger, better, stronger tower, that qualifies us for mitigation match. So that's where the ninety nine thousand comes in from FEMA. So ultimately it would be I think it was like a hundred and eighty seven thousand from FEMA.
I'll take their hundred and eighty seven thousand.
And so um in the end, when all the dust settles, it should be out about two hundred and four thousand for the total project. Um, and we're there thinking about twelve to sixteen weeks from start to finish. So um
So what kind of interruption will we have?
None. Um, so they're going to build the site that we're choosing where Dustin was planning on building or tearing down the ball field that's north of the tower site. Um, so as soon as they get that leveled, we'll get it prepped. We'll build the new tower there and it's literally turn one on, turn the other one off.
Now, if this, all of this also includes tearing down the old?
And hauling it off and cleaning the site up. And so that's Dustin's excited because that's where he wanted to build the new uh adult baseball field. So uh made our parks director a little giddy about that potentially happening. So
So the bottom line is, what'd you say, two hundred and
Two hundred and four.
We had two hundred and fifty budgeted. So it is a savings there. Plus it costs way more than we thought it was going to cost in the whole FEMA scheme before the FEMA money.
Absolutely. Um, this one will have a concrete communications building. Um, it'll have a generator that backs it up, so we won't have the communication failures that we went through. But also it still leaves this tower standing at the law enforcement center, which uh we will leave a repeater and an antenna on um so that if we do have a communications failure, we already have a backup existing. So
You said twelve to sixteen weeks. When you first said that, I thought you were about to say a month.
And I was about Twelve to sixteen weeks. If we um, the last time I talked to South Plains, um, if we started then, we would have it up and running by the end of May. So
Now, how excited you are for the
Yes, absolutely.
About it for years. Yes. And Captain McDonald, I'm sure could attest to how many times their radios didn't work east of town.
Yes, this should alleviate all those issues.
Think it's a good positive thing to hear.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Mayor, I move that we offer any other discussion.
No, any more discussion on this item?
I move that we authorize the uh for you and the city manager to execute, sign the necessary documents for three hundred foot uh guide tower and related amenities. Uh, studies, filing fees, permits, support facility, security fencing, antennas, uh cables uh and related paraphernalia.
Okay. We have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
That, none opposed, motion carries. Next, we'll move on to item number nine, to consider and take necessary action to authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents for the purchase of a twenty twenty five Chevrolet Silverado twenty five hundred HD CK two oh seven four three four wheel drive crew cab one fifty nine work truck to replace the emergency management truck damaged in the May twenty twenty four.
Mayor and members of council, Cole didn't tell you on that last item that the mayor has to climb the antenna once constructed to christen it so that uh it is approved.
We have to find that. We'll do that from the bottom. Cool. Wouldn't want me.
Mayor and members of council, this item's for you. Um, as y'all, the May twenty fourth storm, uh Cole's pickup was deemed totaled. And um our insurance said that they would be willing if we got it one hundred percent repaired and signed off, then they would cover it again. You're not going to find anybody that does hail repair that's going to sign a document that says one hundred percent. So I asked Cole to go out and search for a vehicle. Uh, he went through the various um co-op purchasing avenues that we have, which doesn't require us to go out for bids. I've already done all that. Uh, through the interlocal purchasing system, he uh found a vehicle. It's sitting there in the lot waiting uh for us to uh take action on this this evening. Uh, we received about twenty thousand six hundred and eighty three dollars uh in insurance money for his existing truck. Um, so that leaves about uh thirty two thousand nine hundred and thirty six dollars uh to to buy the vehicle, about another six thousand uh to get this vehicle ready to go and out into the field, which comes out to about thirty eight thousand nine hundred and thirty six dollars, which um with the emergency management, the cost is split between the city and the county. The county approved this amount earlier today. So the city, we were asking for a motion to authorize city manager to execute the necessary documents for the purchase of a twenty twenty five Chevrolet Silverado twenty five hundred HD four wheel drive crew cab uh work truck to replace his existing vehicle.
Well, we heard that it's a paint truck.
If they can remake the The judge doesn't think that's a green eye. She said my question too live.
I read it here. Oh, I thought it was her idea to get the pink one.
We could go hot pink.
We could. We could make it a real bright pink.
So it's black.
No, it's black. The picture is black, but the vehicle is actually white.
The white one, it's white with black interior. I thought the same thing.
Mayor, I move that we take uh necessary action to authorize the city manager to execute a contract. Uh, and that's in the necessary documents for the purchase of a twenty twenty five Chevrolet Silverado Silverado.
Unless, and the necessary documents for the purchase of a twenty twenty-five Chevrolet Silverado twenty-five hundred four-wheel-drive crew cab work truck to replace the emergency management truck damaged in the mayor in the May twenty twenty-four storm.
Okay. Motion in a second, all in favor? With that, motion carries. Next item will be number ten, discussion of city board appointment.
Mayor and members of council, this is a discussion item only, and I will allow our city secretary to come up here and do her thing.
Well, good evening once again, mayor and council. As you know, if you've been on council before, we typically had our board appointments in the August-September timeframe, and those terms would start in October. And Mr. Fisher has decided that we really would like that to be on a calendar year. It's just a little easier to manage. And we're not at the end of our fiscal year and in the budget time trying to figure out who's going to man these boards. So we are now bringing these board appointments to you. I have left a roster at each of your, at each of your spots. Those are board appointment, that's board appointment information as of today. But Joe Shed has been out for a few weeks and his department has not finished contacting all of the planning and zoning, ZBA, housing standards folks whose terms would have ended in twenty twenty-four to see who would be willing to continue serving. Mr. Fisher's idea was, if they were willing to continue serving, we're so late in this process, let's let's get them back on board. But we do have some vacancies and we are going to have to find people to appoint. So to that end, we have reached out to potential volunteers who have previously applied and have not been granted a spot on a board or have even have mentioned an interest in the last twelve months. And so we are talking to those folks, but we are going to start advertising. We do have a good enough list now of things that are available and that we will need to appoint for, that we're going to start advertising those. You probably will start seeing that on social media tomorrow and we will have a press release prepared for the paper. Don't know if that'll be by the tomorrow noon deadline for Wednesday's paper, but certainly for the Sunday paper. We want to make sure that folks know that these positions are open and we want to get some good candidates because people are willing to volunteer if they know that we're in need. So we're gonna, we're gonna do that. In your packet, the yellow highlighted individuals are folks whose terms are up in twenty twenty-four and a lot of them will say, will have agreed to continue or what have you. If they're in blue, that is a position we're going to have to appoint and find a volunteer for. And it will likely say something like, can no longer, you know, attend, not eligible, won't continue in that capacity. So you can see the blue absolutely needs to be, needs to find a new volunteer. And the yellows, a lot of these times, except for those planning and zoning type boards, a lot of these will say that, the yellows will say, yes, we're willing to serve again. So we will have that, those final answers on Wednesday. That was our deadline to have the, all of the boards communicated with and answers back on who's willing to continue serving. And then we will immediately forward that to you. You may have somebody in your back pocket that says, hey, I've been wanting to volunteer for the longest time. Or you might be in a social club where you're, you have, you know, people you can reach out to. We want to make sure that we reach out in every way possible for these volunteer positions. And I really expect by Thursday, we will have a very good list for you. And I think that is it. Is there, are there any questions? Is there anything you'd like to know about these boards?
I just hope that will need Centennial Committee people.
Yes, now that's, and that's not even in this list. That's a whole nother, that's a whole nother, a whole nother thing we need to do. But we have been collecting names from several of you. I know Councilman Ledesma was in today, this morning before he left town, and gave us a list of people that he'd like to see on that committee. And when I was talking to Mr. Fisher earlier today, we want fifteen, twelve to fifteen people on that committee. It's, it's going to be a year-long committee and we need all the great minds figuring out how we're going to celebrate this momentous occasion. So we're real excited about that. We are set to appoint those on the twentieth as well. So we will, in the next couple of days, get you, if you have people that you'd like to see on that committee and haven't mentioned them to us, then let us know and then we're going to get you guys a list. And, and those, those folks that we already have might have friends that are like, oh, I know they'd be great on this committee. So we've, we've got some options, but we really are going to try to nail that down on the twentieth. Any other questions? Nothing? All right.
Mayor, free to leave this item.
Mayor Joe Shed and I were talking today, getting back up to speed after he'd been out. One of the boards that you have that's listed here is a construction advisory and appeals board. This board has not met since twenty nineteen. I really, I don't feel there's a need for this board. This board was established to appeal decisions that Joe might make or how he handled something. I think if something like that comes up, they can meet with me and if I feel like that we need to bring in some experts in the field or whatever to go over what happened, then we can do that. I, I'm not saying that Joe is always going to be right, but I don't. I wouldn't like to have a board that every decision I might make that someone goes, well, I'm going to peel it to this board and then we'll see where you go, because I don't think that's fair to Joe or, or to the organization.
We'll just say one thing without that.
All right, I'll just say one small thing about that, and that, that is that that board is in our code of ordinance and we would need to change our ordinance to get rid of that board.
Any discussion on that? Any, any thoughts? I've never been a part that I remember ever even hearing step forward me.
I think we were, come up with a problem, we could, we can always have anyone agree to do that.
So good with that one. Move on to item number eleven, Ken, charter review update.
Mayor and members of the council, our charter review committee has met twice since their initial appointment and they've had some great discussion regarding various items. They were scheduled to meet this Wednesday. We pushed it to next week just due to various weather potentials. So we're going to meet next Tuesday, June, January fourteenth. I'm, I'm ready for vacation, so I'm getting there as fast as I can. But we've had good discussions regarding council members. Do, part of it was, do we consider the ideal, the size of the city? Do we go from four council members and a mayor to six and a mayor? And discussion around that was kind of, well, you know, it's hard to get people to, to serve on boards and commissions today and even run for city councils, school board, all the other things. So circled back and it basically was like, okay, let's leave it at five. But what happens if we gave more authority to the mayor's position where the mayor can vote, the mayor could be an active participant of the body that's up here. So I know they're still having that discussion. They have not made any recommendations back to the council yet, but they will be soon because we've got to call the charter election before February fourteenth. So they've got a lot of work to do and there's a lot of housekeeping on this, but there's really, really good discussions. Residency requirements also came up and that's a tough one. The Slater was researching that and he, there's been a court ruling on regarding residency requirements, and we'll go over that with the charter commission and, and clarify that. And the other thing that I think everybody's trying to get clear, I don't know if this would be in the charter or how we do this, but what actually constitutes a quorum? Because that seems to be a challenge somewhere along the way that, right now with what we have, the mayor and two council members make a quorum. But currently, the mayor can't vote. The mayor can't present a motion, so you've got two people there. So what, what is a quorum and where does it stand? How is it counted? How is it factored in there? And I have learned in my thirty-plus years in city management that every attorney has a different opinion on quorums. I don't know why, but that may be something else that I was also taught early from attorneys, that vagueness keeps attorneys in business, so. But we're going to try our best to see if we can get that clear. More pointing just to the number that what we have as far as, as council, of what, how does that exactly work? So, but they will be meeting Tuesday, the fourteenth, and keep plowing through this and hopefully come back and share some good thoughts with you guys.
Great. Thank you for your work on that and those volunteers work on that and staff work on that. Next item is number twelve, city manager report and staff update, project update, staff citizen recognition, items of community interests.
Mayor and council members, I'm actually going to put my police chief on the spot. I forgot to tell her I was going to do this. I don't know if she's running out the door yet. This is something that, you know, very similar to the way we started this meeting, we need to do a better job of this as well as the city. And I'm actually going to invite these two to our next council meeting. But the chief issued two commendations in community relations to Captain McDonald and to Officer Fortner for their assistance to the Sundown Police Department with their program of Coco with Heroes. I think it's phenomenal that she's been here about thirty days and she's already had a police chief award. She's already doing commendations for our, and that's, again, when we go back and taking care of employees, that's what we want our employees doing, is being part of this community and recognizing the achievements of our employees, but also recognizing the achievements of our community members. So I'm glad she's here. I'm glad that she is making a positive impact in her short thirty few days. She took over the whole dais within a few moments here today. So, hey, I don't know. City council candidates, candidate packets are available pickup. We've already had three people pick up packets already. Again, I told you charter review is the fourteenth. City holiday is Monday, January twentieth. We will still meet that evening at six o'clock for council meeting. Somebody serious, probably mine over there.
He thinks it was Mr. Powell looking or looking at you.
And then Level N listens, the next one is Friday, February seventh. We're still working on a location. The last one, we had three guests, four guests. Great questions, great participation, good staff member attendance. Mayor and Ms. McKay, thank y'all for both attending. I, I think we got to a rocky start in December, but I think we're going to have some good participation as we move forward. And it was good getting that, that information or questions that they had, and I think it's going to help us. So thank y'all for making that. I don't have any joke to you. I know you're just coming back from being off all of December, so.
The only comment I have is about Level N listens we have had, and I know that some of you have interacted on Facebook with folks who have talked about the time that we're holding that. And so that might be a discussion if we want to continue to have it at seven thirty in the morning. If we want to try a noon meeting or an after-work meeting, but that may be a discussion just to give more people an opportunity to come. But having said that, we were super excited about Level N listens on Friday.
Yes.
Even if it's something where we alternate, one month we do it this early, but I can tell you, the only time I will be able to make seven thirty is if there's no school in session because of school drop-off. That might be a lot of peoples, but we had great turnout. It's easy to have a good turnout when school's not in session though. I think Friday was awesome.
I'd like to have it on another day too. I have rotary every Friday at seven. We certainly invited to upgrade down there.
We might just crash rotary one, one Friday and y'all have all the answers anyhow, sir.
Bill's got the program that day.
Wouldn't y'all do it that early?
I'll have several produce stacked up. That'd be great.
But I ran into him walking into the country club at noon one day in the summer. I thought you met at noon.
Oh, that's the other.
Are you on both?
That's his club.
Are you on both? You were at lunch that day, remember? He wasn't.
It's hard being popular, Mr. Powell.
Well, it was a makeup.
Well, being flexible is, is a great thing and can definitely try to be flexible and, and find, find our spot, find what works.
I will always be there when I can. I enjoy those things.
We post a forum, a forum. Those different cases we have more than two council persons.
I have not posted for a forum. But we, we could.
Yes, we absolutely can. We can totally post for a forum and eventually show a history.
Any guess on that?
No, ma'am. I don't know, but chief, you have anything you want to add? Back row group?
Making a rubbery fresh fruit so we can kind of bring balls to the table at the same time, but.
Oh, she's trying to make some peace there. I like it. Will we have any action after our executive session for the media? So with that, we'll move on to item number thirteen, and we will convene into executive session in accordance with the Texas Government Code five five one dot oh seven four to deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, city manager. The city of Lublin, the city council of the city of Lublin will begin its executive session on the sixth day of January at seven thirty-nine PM o'clock. Subject matter of the executive session deliberation is as follows. In accordance with Texas Government Code five five one dot oh seven four to deliberate the appointment, employment evaluation duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee, city manager. city manager. Ready? The city council, the city of Levelling, has completed its executive session on the sixth day of January twenty twenty-five at seven fifty-three P M. O'clock. No action from executive session, and with that, we are adjourned.